Let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened to this evening, February 22nd, 2022. We thank you for coming to the meeting this evening. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Lee Dumas, if you would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation for council.
Pledge allegiance to the good flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we invoke your presence here tonight. We thank you for this council. Thank you for this great city that you've given us and all those that serve this city. We ask that we would do what's pleasing to you. We'd do your will tonight, be with those around the world and locally and statewide that are struggling right now, and help us to be mindful of those folks tonight as we're here and as we serve the greater good. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
We welcome Ms. Adams, who has joined us tonight to fill in for Ms. Duncan. Ms. Adams, do we have anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that being said, council, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting. For approval, we'll have two. We'll take those separately. One is the workshop and the other is our regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion to receive minutes from the workshop from February 8th, 2022. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, February 8th, 2022. That was our regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Contained in your packet this evening are departmental reports, council. Administrator or department heads will be more than happy to give you additional information as needed. Ms. Howell joins us for our financial report this evening.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to give you a brief summary of January 2022. So again, with the general fund, we actually collected $11.4 million in the month of January to give us a year-to-date total of $19.4 million. The total expenditures for the month were just a little under $2 million, which included $8,000 worth of fund balance usage. So the year-to-date total expenditures in the general fund is $17.4 million, which is 5% under budget. If you'll refer to your dashboard where we compare actuals to benchmarks, you'll see that we have an overall positive variance at $3.4 million, and we're carrying a little over $20 million in our cash account in the general fund now. Moving on to the hospitality fund, we have a year-to-date revenue of $1.7 billion with expenditures being $661,000. The cash balance in the hospitality fund is $2.2 million. In the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $842,000. The expenditures are $650,000, and the cash balance in the stormwater account is $2.5 million. So that's a brief vote review, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Council?
What I like to be, what I call our leading indicator, our hospitality fund. What do we see as far as year-to-date, since we've got inflation on food and things like that?
Yes, actually, our hospitality taxes are fantastic. I'll get to the right one. Yeah, we had a high of $259,000 this month in January alone, and so that gives us a year-to-date number of $1.7 million, and we are well over budget now. So we expect things to continue. I know things could change, but that's what we expect right now.
Yeah, if you see it start to plateau, give us a notice.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is there any way to determine what amount of that increase is inflation?
Um, I don't know with the information that we have, that maybe some information that we can find out doing some little research.
Could you tell me on this, you know, in the cash balance for the general fund for the fiscal years 2021, '22, in January, you know, the net monthly cash was, you know, kind of below the line every single month, July, August, September, October, November, December, then it shot up substantially in January. Why do we have that kind of effect?
Uh, in the cash, in the general fund, cash balance for taxes. That's when all the taxes are due, January 15th, and that's when we get our payments, start to get the big payments from the counties for us.
Gotcha. Good, thanks. Those are scheduled payments over what period of time? Are there four or five payments that we receive from them?
Well, we get them monthly throughout the year, but then they also, they give us special payments they do every week in January.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so, but normally it's just once a month.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Others? Comments? Questions? Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council, we have a petitioner this evening, Ms. Holly Reese, who would like to speak to council in regards to school traffic on Vandavender Drive. Ms. Reese, if you will state your name and address as a matter of the record, the floor is yours.
My name is Holly Reese. I live at 204 Vandavender Drive, Greer, South Carolina, 29650. We're here tonight with concerns of bond school, with the school kids as they leave and go to school. They, it's four times a day, and they race up and down our road. It's become a big concern for safety. We have elderly people that walk, people walk their dogs. So it's not only for their safety, it's for other safeties, you know, other people's safety as well. They have even went side-by-side racing down our road, which is a big problem if, you know, someone else is coming, and there's a big curve right down the road, probably, I don't know, 1,000 feet from our, my house and Sheila's house, that if they're going too fast, something's going to happen one day, and they're going to wreck. We've been to the police, the police have been out there on multiple occasions, several, several, several times, and this has been going on since I've lived there, and I've been there seven years, and Sheila has lived there 27 years. And it seems like it's getting worse every year. We've called the school, and I believe the school makes announcements over the intercom, but when they do that, it gets worse. So then we call the police back out, and the police have wrote tickets and wrote tickets and wrote tickets, and we've also been up to the school and talked to Mr. Brannon, and he said that they are trying, they have went to the district and they're trying to do something there, but this is the first response that we've gotten from them, that we've had from them, to help us in any way. But their initial response was that they couldn't do anything because the school kids are not on their property when they leave. I was also told that they're, when they're coming to bonds, they're leaving their homeschool, and they have an allotted amount of time to get there. So I don't know if that's the reason for speeding, probably not. They're kids. You know, I've had teenagers, I know. I was a teenager once myself. If that is the case, then they need to be allowed more time, allotted more time to get to and from school. The buses have no problem getting there without speeding. Buses come down our road every day. So we're asking for help with that. Officer Ballinger, I've spoke with him several times, he's on board with us. We would like to get some speed bumps, maybe on our road, additional speed limit signs, maybe a, the digital radar, if we could get one of those that would clock them when they come up and down the road. Does that give y'all data? Can y'all go back and look at the data? Okay, that would be helpful. We do, we did start a petition. We meet all the requirements except for the last one, which is you have to have 300, yeah, people coming up and down your road every day. I don't know that we have that many people. It's mainly the problem with the school kids. Now, there are other people that speed as well, so maybe if we could get some help from y'all, that would be, that would be really nice. I do have photos of like the speed racers, and I have videos if y'all want to see those as well.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I don't know that we need photos necessarily, because I think every one of us is aware of what's going on over there.
And it's, it's not just our road, it's Cunningham, too, because where V's off, they race to get to Pine Street and...
And why we don't typically comment when we have a petitioner, Ms. Reese, I am aware of an incident that occurred on Pine Street in about the last month or so that required the police. They are working very closely with the school to try and figure out how to address this issue. I know there was some conversation recently about revoking their driving privileges to schools and some other things, but the school district was going to have to review that with their attorney, so I don't know if that's gone anywhere or not, but we're actively pursuing, trying to address this problem. I suspect it's been going on as long as there's been cars over there.
60 years, if I remember correctly.
It's been going on at least 60 years. Some of us know that.
And when I was in Greer High, I saw, I didn't speak. I was...
But we will continue to work on it. We have actually, we're making some changes to the traffic calming policy. As soon as that comes out, we'll let you know as well, too, and certainly the police department will be aware of those changes as we get those into place.
Okay. Well, we know if, I know it takes time to do that, but how long in the future do you see that happening, or us getting, finding a resolution for this?
I'm not sure that I can tell you. It's an ongoing issue. We do have a portable sign that gives us some data. Unfortunately, that typically encourages them to see who can get the highest number, so I don't know that that's the best way for us to address that situation, but we'll make the chief aware of you being here tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, we don't have, that sign doesn't have a camera, correct?
It does not. No, sir.
Yeah. Chief's working on it pretty close, I know.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Reese. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, council, a few reminders tonight, nothing of major note. I want to just remind you again of Thursday night, we begin our retreat at 6 o'clock here, and you will hear from Finance and Building Development Services to kind of wrap up these presentations that you've had over the last two council meetings, including tonight, and then we will start about 9 o'clock on Friday morning. We will conclude the retreat as it ends of its own volition throughout the day. So 6 o'clock on Thursday and 9 o'clock on Friday morning. Another reminder, your statement of economic interest is due to the Ethics Commission, and it's that online portal, and that's due on the 30th of March, and I'll remind you again up to that point. And then the last reminder is that we will have the redistricting public hearing next council meeting, that will be the 8th. That will be, the folks from Revenue and Fiscal Affairs will be zooming in to help guide us through that, but that we'll also hold the public hearing that night on redistricting. So that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Thank you, sir. With that then, we'll move to appointments of boards and commissions. We have one resignation, which is in District 1. You should have information in terms of a biographical sketch of a nomination for District 1. Mr. Airwood?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lance Owens has agreed to serve. He was on my list as well as Ms. Cunningham's list. We didn't know that, but that's who, that was our first choice. Lance helped, he was a founder, or co-founder of SSI Physical Therapy, and they moved away for a time, they've come back, and they're living in, living in old Greer, on Pell Street, and they're very involved with not only just their neighborhood, but all of the city. You see them around. He'll be, he is one that will really be involved and be a good servant.
Comes as a nomination to hear a second?
Second.
Floor's open for discussion.
Lance will be here.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, let's move to items of new business, first of which is the pavement preservation project, Reclamite Rejuvenator. You've got a full description of this process and pricing. You heard some from Mr. Grant in a recent workshop. I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As Mayor said, the two agenda items tonight are a follow-up from the workshop we had two weeks ago, where I shared some information to you about pavement preservation. We've got two preservation projects proposed this year. The first one is the Reclamite Rejuvenator application project. In your agenda package, you should have the list of streets shown, broken down by county. All the listed streets were recently repaved by the city, or they're new streets and subdivisions that we recently accepted into the city for maintenance. I've ridden all these streets along with the contractor to confirm that they are good candidates for the Reclamite product. Total mileage being treated is 8.1 miles, and the contractor is Pavement Technology Incorporated. They are the only licensed applicator in South Carolina and the eastern United States. The proposed contract amount is $110,160. Funding will be from the paving fund, and you may recall that APWA recommends 10% to 25% of our road maintenance budget be preservation-related, so this project and the next one puts us at 16%. So we're right in that range. Staff requests approval to proceed with this rejuvenator application project, and I'll try to entertain any questions.
Council, you heard that this is a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Floor's open for discussion.
Let me just ask a question. When you're talking about, I know like Pleasant Meadows, now that's not a very old subdivision.
Correct.
And their streets, this is needed for their streets or something?
Yes, ma'am. You may recall from the workshop a few weeks ago, this preservation is something you do early in the process, you know, before the roads get old. This will help preserve it and lengthen the life. Yes, ma'am.
So they weren't up to par when we accepted them?
Oh, yes, they were. They were. The purpose of this product is to keep them up to par longer, basically. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, they're in great shape, and we want to keep them that way.
Others? Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, the second item of new business is the pavement preservation project for the HA5 surface sealer. Again, plenty of information in our workshop, as well as a full description contained below Mr. Grant. Floor's yours.
Thank you again, sir. In your package, you should have a map showing the location as all the streets in the Hammond Crossing subdivision. These streets were crack sealed in 2020, and it is a common practice to apply surface seal after crack sealing. The contractor has evaluated these streets and verified they are good candidates for the product. The total length being treated is 1.15 miles, and the contractor is Blount Construction, and they are the only licensed applicator of this product in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia. The proposed contract amount is $61,630.82. Funding, again, from the paving fund, and again, this puts us at the 16% point of our budget. Staff requests approval to proceed with this HA5 surface sealer application project, and I'll entertain any questions.
Council, comes with a recommendation from staff for the purpose of discussion. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion.
Are we going to keep, I guess, start a study to follow these roads just to make sure that the money that we're paying is increasing the longevity of the life of the road?
Well, we'll start tracking when we do this, and it'll still be in the GIS data over time. As far as being able to define a number of how many years extra life we're getting out of payment, that'll be kind of hard to quantify, but the average is, as I said in the workshop earlier, is like five to seven years for Reclamite, and for the HA5 is seven to 10 years. So that's a general ballpark of what kind of life we're getting out of this product.
Does this change any of the looks of the road?
The HA5 is, it'll make, it'll make the road look new and black.
Look what?
The HA5, the one we're, you're considering right now, it'll, it'll, road will look, it'll have a black ceiling on top of it, and it'll look new. The Reclamite, the earlier agenda item...
Actually, Hammond Crossing looks like a war zone in there.
Yes, ma'am. This will, right, that's, that's, as I said, it's, it's, it is customary to follow crack sealing up with, to kind of blend those, all those crack seal marks into the pavement. So it'll, it'll look a lot nicer and last, and last seven to 10 years longer. Yes, ma'am.
That is good, because we do hear that feedback when we do the crack sealing. They're just kind of concerned about the aesthetics.
Right. Agreed. I agree 100%. It's just, the crack seal is a good product. It's not the best looking product, but it is effective, and this is a way to kind of mitigate the looks.
Mr. Mayor, how does this affect our paving fund? How much does this take out of that?
Well, well, from a percentage standpoint, this one in particular is 16% of our paving fund. The recommendation is somewhere in the neighborhood of 25% annually of our paving fund should go to these types of products. So we know that that's kind of the goal we're going to stay in with our road maintenance program, but theoretically, to Mr. Airwood's point, we should get 25% longer life out of all the roads we're dealing with by application of this product. So we're going to try and keep it within that range. Your question earlier about are we going to be maintaining a list of those things, yes, sir. I mean, we will know what we've maintained and what we've applied on such and such streets, so the expectation would be that those streets that have been treated with Reclamite or HA5 would have that longer lifespan. They would fall down on the priority list farther.
And they would be outliers, I would say.
That's right.
When you looked at it from, so that's, that's, in my opinion, we definitely need to be tracking that.
Agreed.
Council, after a road is resurfaced, does it make sense to use that first technique?
Reclamite, ideally about a year, about six to 12 months after the road's initially paved, but studies have shown it's effective out to seven years. I didn't really feel good about going out that far, so all of ours are four years newer.
Now, with, do we plan to kind of see this maintenance process through, or are we just going to do it one time? Does that make sense?
This is our first trial run at it, but I do intend to keep this up every year.
Well, I'm saying for these two particular, these particular roads, or we're going, you know, as they degrade, do we plan to like, you know, do some more maintenance, bring them back?
Oh, yeah.
Just to kind of see how it looks?
Yes, sir. They'll be evaluated every four years, and the PCI will be whatever it is, and we'll, we'll treat each one accordingly.
How long would we anticipate kind of to cycle all of our road system through this process?
That's a good question. I haven't thought about that one. It'll take a long time. I'll probably be retired by the time it goes all the way through. But, but, but I think we're setting the foundation right now for a long-term plan. I mean, if Robert stays, he'll, he'll inherit this one day, and he'll just keep on trucking.
If you think about it, you know, we started a discussion just simply on repaving some 15, 20 years ago, and at that point in time, our goal was, you know, that we would, that we would be in the 15 to 20-year range on repaving all the way through the city. And if this works like we say it is, and we are able to change that to 20 to 25 years, that could be substantial savings down the road.
Yes, sir.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, we have two items to discuss in executive session. I'll entertain a motion to receive those two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the contractual matter pertaining to Project Chubbs, as allowed by State Statute Section 30-470A2, and also a motion to enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to Velocity Park, as allowed by State Statute Section 30-470A5.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, we'll stand in executive session. I will ask that the room be cleared for executive session, and for those that will be participating in the workshop, we'll call you back in. All right, in executive session this evening, we have considered two matters. We'll take action in regards to one of those matters. Do I hear a motion that we come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Um, Ms. Adams? Almost got me. Almost.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, we're going to adjourn our regular meeting. With that, we're going to take a short break, let's say about 10 minutes, and then we will reconvene for workshop reports from the Engineering Department, Parks and Recreation Department, and the Public Services Department. All righty, folks. Let me call the workshop meeting to order. Thank y'all for joining us this evening and adapting to this new format that seems to have worked well. I know council has enjoyed it, and we appreciate the time and effort that you have put into it as well, too, to give us a little bit of insight into your operation as we, as we get to that point in time in the year where we are making budget considerations, and we'll be having a workshop of our own here at the end of the week. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. First this evening is going to be the Engineering Department. Mr. Grant, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, council. I do appreciate the opportunity to share what's been going on in the Engineering Department. We're going to review highlights from 2021 and also discuss a little bit about 2022, but before I get going, I just do want to recognize Robert Rue, our Assistant City Engineer, and John Goguenau, our Facilities and Project Manager, so those guys make a lot of things we do possible. So last October, we became a standalone department with two distinct divisions, one being Engineering Stormwater and the other Facilities and Project Management. Engineering Stormwater primarily manages the paving and road maintenance program, any city infrastructure projects, and Stormwater Program and Flood Plane Management. So let's talk about our paving and road maintenance just a minute. The highlights for 2021 paving program were we repaved approximately two miles. I would note that West Moreland Road in Sparkville County and West Phillips Road in Greve County were both reclamation projects where we got some extra width in addition to the paving, so those were good improvements that took care of some complaint issues we've been receiving, so those were great projects for us.
those were great projects for us. Um, our paving program, we do partner with both counties to fund and administer these programs. We also included 2.3 lane miles of crack sealing this past year and it was all in Lismore Park. Also this past year, we started a street cut repair program with CPW, uh, where we partnered with them to develop a process and then our department administers the program and Public Services performs the repair work.
Praise God.
Mr. Grant, how's that going so far? What, I mean, is it working?
Good. I think, uh, I think it's been quite busier than we anticipated and I believe that's partially because of the time of year. They have a lot of water line breaks in the winter because of the cold, cold temperatures. So I think the average was one a week. It was like 52. We anticipated 52, um, uh, repairs for the year. I'm sure we're well, we're probably halfway already in just the first few months.
Yeah, we've, we've got, uh, we probably have 14 on the board now that are cold patched or waiting to be cold patched as we're waiting for temperatures to improve for hot mitts. Uh, we've, we probably have run somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or 10 completions, uh, road cuts before we got too cold for asphalt. So, uh, yeah, we're probably halfway to that target number that we expected.
Just roughly, I mean roughly, largest to smallest in terms of what you've dealt with?
Four by, is, and, and Steve may have to clarify, four by eight, I believe is, is the largest that, uh, we got contractually, uh, to do in-house. Uh, and that's as large as we got. We, we maybe done one or two of that, at that size.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that was paving. Uh, we'll talk about infrastructure projects just for a minute. Um, some of the more notable projects this past year were Blackwell Road Bridge, where we, we replaced some rotten wooden pilings under the bridge. I think it was the four pilings. Uh, the Jason Street Parking Garage, as you know, is online now. We had a lot of support roll for the contractor and the designers of that facility. And then we also had a, a solid waste operations study this year that was, was a good one. Also this past year, uh, we updated the flood plane ordinance and land development regulations, Article 8, which is the engineering construction standards. We updated that. And then Leesburg Peak Dump Site Remediation, we've got that project, uh, to DEHAC satisfaction now. So that was a good win for us this year.
For what that cost, we ought to put a picnic table and make it a park.
Yep.
Getting ready to say, we, we might ought to put a snowmakin' machine out there and let people slide down it.
Um, these next two, these are not in the big scheme of things. These aren't big flashy projects, but to the people on Village Court and Maplewood Circle, uh, these were game changers in my view. Uh, these problems existed for many years and previous remedy attempts were not successful. So ma- so after some extensive investigations, uh, and custom design by our crack engineering staff and some custom construction by Public Services, um, these multi-year nagging issues did get resolved, I'm happy to say. And the rainy day phone calls from these residents have stopped. So we did some big projects and we did some small projects. Uh, so this is some good, a couple of small ones we got knocked out. Um, as you know, we also manage the traffic calming program for the city and that's gotten very active lately. We had 12 applications in 2021, which I believe is the most since I've been here. Uh, we've also launched into Public Services is self-performing installation of these, which is a new adventure for them. And we have found that for a 24-foot wide road, the costs, material cost only is about a thousand dollars per hump to install these. Uh, we do have five streets awaiting installation and, uh, we do have a proposed policy update, uh, coming up this year.
Mark, have those been helpful?
Very much so.
Yeah.
Uh, next, I'd like to just give a brief overview of the Stormwater Program activity. Uh, the Stormwater Program exists to protect our waterways from stormwater pollutants generated by construction sites or illicit discharges from illegal dumping. It requires six minimum control measures that we must do and maintain to keep in compliance with our MS4 permit. The MS4 permit is what gives us authority to review and approve, approve plans and issue what we call grading permits, DEHAC cause at land disturbance permits. Uh, control measures four and five is where we spend the majority of the time with plan reviews and construction site inspections. So once plans are reviewed and approved, a pre-construction meeting is held and a grading permit's issued and then we start the monthly, uh, the monitoring of each site for compliance with city and state regulations. Activity wise, we had 55 projects submitted for review this year, which was a record. Uh, we also issued 39 grading permits this year, which is also another record. And we had 142 total plan reviews this past year because each plan submittal takes two to four reviews before it's approved. So the 142 total reviews was also a record. Um, we have, down at the bottom there, we also have other reviews that are part of the development process. Uh, so we do other reviews besides stormwater reviews, um, such as engineering reviews, ASB builds, building permits, and final plats. Uh, so needless to say, the, the plan review section has been, had record activity this year. This is just a historical summary of the project submittals showing the 55 for this year, um, for, for last year, excuse me, as so far this year. Um, we are at 10 submittals through mid-February, which if you project that out, puts us at about 60-plus projects for 2022. So, you know, barring some major change in the economy, we're, we're, we're back at these numbers this year. So after plan review and permit approval comes construction and inspection. And this is the inspection summary page. Uh, we averaged 62 construction, active sites for 2021. This is a heavy load for two inspectors. Um, inspector activity includes all of these inspections. Um, as you can see, the monthly site inspections is over-doubled in the numbers since, uh, 2016. The paving inspections this year was about average, normal, average year. Uh, the building permit lock drainage reviews is over-doubled since 2016. The CO, Certificate of Occupancy inspections is five times more than it was in, in, uh, 2016. Uh, encroachment permit inspections, that's a new inspection that just didn't exist in 2016. It just became a, uh, a task for us and inspection for us in 2020. So that's a, that's a new, uh, permit that's been added to our inspection, uh, or load. We had 108 grading permit closeout inspections and 43 stormwater service calls from residents. So, and inspectors are very active and quite honestly stretched thin with this much activity. We do have an upward trend in our inspection, as, as I was just mentioning. Uh, you can see the inspection total spiked in 2019, which coincided with our previous record of 46 projects submitted in 2018. So the, so the active sites and inspections peaked. Uh, this year with the new record of 55, uh, projects submitted, we do anticipate another spike in, in total active sites and total inspections for the year that we're going to have to prepare for. Um, this past year, we had a 12.9% increase in the stormwater fee billing due to all this development. So the stormwater fee along with plan review fees, we hope will help us fund additional resources to manage the stormwater program. So that's highlights of Engineering and Stormwater. I'm going to move over to the Facilities and Project Management side of the house. This is a new division with three of the four employees are relatively new, uh, but, and they're charged with maintenance of all our city-owned facilities and then project management, um, from kickoff to closure. One of our goals is reinventing how the city handles facility maintenance. Um, we're, this year, we're trying to get that going by starting and creating a baseline on our existing inventory. It's quite a task as, uh, as we have 56 facilities, all in various stages of their lifecycle with systems and components ranging from brand new to some very old. So by collecting all this detailed data and some bench, and establishing benchmark conditions, we hope to be more proactive, uh, and less reactive in our approach to maintenance in the future. So you can see there, uh, John's been doing a lot of, uh, data collection and, you know, we got 10 facilities over 20 years old, seven over 30 years old, and so on, so forth. On the project management side, we're kind of starting from scratch as the city's never had a dedicated project manager. Um, in the past, we've had projects, but as, as we grow, the projects are becoming larger and more complex. And there's never been an established project management process that everyone can follow. And John is very excited about the possibilities and the opportunity to shape this program. Uh, we are looking at various, uh, project management softwares currently that provide the tools we're looking for. And hopefully in the next year, we're going to have an operational project management process because we know what's coming and we're gonna, we're gonna need it. Uh, we are active in professional organizations to keep up to date in our industry. Um, this helps us do our jobs well and it also connects us with other professionals who have the same challenges that we have here. And we did attend some training and certifications this year to keep up with industry, industry, industry trends. I focused a lot on pavement management this year with multiple sessions in that. And then Robert also had pavement, uh, management training session as well, some flood plain management training. That is the highlights from our year in review. Uh, take any questions before we move ahead to 2022.
I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
MS4, MS4 permits, uh, who assumes the liability once we issue those? Is it the con, you know, the property owner or is it kind of shared between the city?
The liability for-
As in if something occurs, you know? I know you're saying that the inspectors are stretched thin with inspections. If something does happen, who assumes?
I mean, if there's some kind of-
DEHAC finding basically.
Yeah, it's the contractor. I don't, I'm not aware of it, us ever, the city or anywhere I've ever worked being on the hook for that. I mean, our job is to make sure they follow the plans. Um, and if they get out of compliance, hopefully we'll catch it beforehand, but, but, but all the risk is theirs.
Okay.
All right, moving on to 2022.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for our new project manager, is there, is there any kind of, um, technical education classes that might be appropriate or you come well-trained?
Well, there is project management professional certification and that's basically, I've taken the school leadership and went to the test. Now, that does give you a certification in project management process. But project management processes are going to be different in just about every field. So that test is, is just a generalized, here's how you run a project. And it could be for an IT project, clear to a construction project. It's just kind of a generalized system. Uh, and I do plan on going back and attacking that. Because then I was, I was at the process about taking when I was getting out of the military and I just, one of the things that when I get out, just go back and do it in a timely manner. Okay, so, uh, the future is coming and we want to help create it. So we are planning, um, to move, to continue moving into the 21st century on how we manage our infrastructure and our work management systems, specifically by implementing asset management software for both our horizontal and vertical assets. Um, a good asset management program requires data and we have good data on our asphalt and road conditions. We have fair data on storm drains, sidewalks, and ramps, et cetera. We have little to no data on culverts and bridges and vertical infrastructure such as buildings, uh, street signs, str- striping or fleet. Uh, we also want to begin collecting data on critical infrastructure such as storm drain system, culverts and bridges, all our buildings and then intersection as well. And we'd also like to, with this data and this software, we'd like to develop a capital improvement program for all our horizontal assets and our vertical assets. We also like to incorporate pavement preservation and recycling efforts into our pavement maintenance program, uh, improve our solid waste operations with a site improvement project. Uh, we're working on updating our traffic calming policy. We got a new parking garage. We want to develop a long-term maintenance plan for that. Um, additionally, John's working on standardizing our project management process. And we do expect a new MS4 permit likely from DEHAC this year. So we'll have, that will dictate some new requirements that we'll have to adapt to, uh, as well. And then lastly, we are considering developing an engineering and stormwater design manual. Some trends we see emerging in our world, um, the land development activity is an oft, has an all-time high. Um, our stormwater staff is stretched thin, uh, in the permitting and inspection sess- uh, sections. Risking poor qual- poor quality outcomes, that kind of keeps me up at night. And what I mean by that is there's so much activity out there, our inspectors can only be in so many places at a time. So sometimes I worry what, what they're not being able to see or what's being covered up out there. So, um, it's just one of the things that keeps me up at night. Other trends, road maintenance is becoming more of a year-round effort with our pavement preservation. It is a great thing for us to do, but it does require more staff oversight. And as you know, our traffic issues and complaints are increasing and speed hunt requests are increasing. Some other, couple of other trends, many of our vertical assets such as HVA systems and roofs are at or beyond their service life. So I would anticipate a surge in maintenance and replacement activity in the next year or two. Um, and then also internal capital project activity is projected to increase. And of course, this is going to require, you know, just more overall maintenance of all of this activity. So moving forward, what do we need as a department to properly manage this growing city and meet the citizen expectations? First and foremost, I think we just need to bring this asset management software online. It'll help us develop our capital improvement program. We'll get a work order system out of it that helps us execute and track internal and external work orders that the, that the public gives us. It'll also help revolutionize our fleet maintenance. And then one other thing we can always need is adequate staff to meet these growing needs and expectations. So I know I've thrown a lot of information at you and I hope it was riveting, but I can summarize with these three things. We had a productive but challenging year managing this record activity. We do have a highly capable team that wants to deliver high-quality, professional and cost-effective engineering and management services for the city. And lastly, we see so much more that we need to do and we could do with the right resources. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Mr. Grant, right, based on the number of inspections that, that we are currently doing and have done over the last several years, are, how much of those are being done in-house and how much of the, those are we having to-
All in-house currently. The only thing we're subbing out right now, as Robert and I were just talking about that, is plan reviews. Uh, sometimes the queue is so full of plan reviews, we have a consultant that, uh, that he'll form out a couple of plans to the, you know, to get them, you know, reviewed in a timely fashion.
Same thing on inspections or, or are we having to-
Right now, it's all, it's all our guys. But like I said, we've added, uh, encroachment permit inspections in the last two years. So that's an inspection they never really had to do until the last two years. And then stormwater complaints and, you know, all that stuff added together, they're just being spread more and more thin and pulled in different directions. And, and if my prediction is true, with the 55 projects submitted in the next six to 12 months, we're going to have a spike in, you know, active construction sites. So they're just gonna, it's just gonna get worse.
So you know where this line of questions is heading then. We, uh, we have, we have spent years refining this process and have, um, I think made a bit of a name for ourselves in terms of friendly to work with and quick to get turnarounds and that sort of thing. What kind of staffing needs are you anticipating in terms of us being able to maintain that standard that we've set for ourselves?
You want specifics? Okay. Um, I plan to-
You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah. Uh, first and foremost, engineer and a plan reviewer and a, and another inspector. Those are the two most critical needs. We also have ideas for like a GIS technician to go out and collect data for the, you know, for our, all our asset management. So those are the top three. But highest priority is inspector and then probably second priority is a plan reviewer. Then if we could get a GIS person, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you. Others?
On the asset management side, I might have missed it. Uh, was science included in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Steve, uh, on a specific item, how is everything right now at Mark Clayton Acres?
It's funny you ask. Uh, we were just on a conference call earlier this week. There's a, another development company and I don't, I don't even know if they're out west, I believe. They're looking at purchasing-
Oh, yeah.
-the other half of that-
Oh, okay.
-project. So they're just doing some due diligence right now. I don't really know any more details other than they called and asked a lot of questions this week.
Did he fulfill what he needed to do?
I don't think it's a hundred percent. I don't, yeah.
Pretty accurate. Others? I think at one point, we were trying to map our stormwater system. And I think you covered some of that, but did you, where are we?
We haven't mapped anything new in years, at least since I've been here. We, we've got a partial database of our system, but it's not, it's not completely accurate. It's a good place to start. But actually, Robert's been working with a WK Dixon to, um, refine a lot of our, or really define and refine our processes and our data the way it exists today. And then we're, we're getting it set up to, to start, um, collecting all that data in the very near future.
Everything new that goes in the ground, we get, we have their, their site engineers submitting the catalog for, moving forward. We're working on getting that implemented in the GIS to go into our asset management system. So we have to revise the data and get more data on the old stuff.
Yeah, the old stuff is the problem. The new stuff, like you said, we get, we get accurate plans now submitted digitally so we can put it right into the GIS. But the old stuff that's been out there for 30, 40, 50 years, we just, we don't really know where it all is. So that's what we gotta get better at.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'm going to sing. Recreation's next since Ms. Cunningham has beaten a steady path to the podium there, sir.
Yeah, the old stuff is the problem. The new stuff, like you say, we get, we get accurate plans now submitted digitally, so we can put it right into the GIS. But the old stuff that's been out there for 30, 40, 50 years, we just, we don't really know where it all is. So that's what we gotta get better at.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to sing, you know, recreation's next since Liz Cunningham has beaten a steady path to the podium there, so.
I'm all excited.
The four years.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the annual report for the Parks and Recreation Department for 2021. Uh, the picture presented in this slide is from the newly renovated Benson Automotive Kids Planet that we opened in April. This slide reflects our organizational chart for the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, it has been revised since, uh, public, uh, since the grounds division is no longer in our department. Uh, the top four boxes in the flow chart represent the administrative staff members, and it's followed by the five divisions that make up our department. And we currently have 21 full-time staff and 44 year-round and seasonal part-time staff. This is a list of the budgets that we currently manage. Uh, you'll notice funds 18 and 23 only reflect the dollars that are allocated for our department projects, uh, and then total department funds are just over 6.8 million. The year in review contains various data points from our department. Uh, we currently manage 22 parks, 12 facilities for a total of 309 acres. Uh, we have 154 total programs last year, and 15 of those were new programs. Uh, we had 16,000 rounds of golf in 2021, and that's a 20% increase from the prior year. Uh, we served, uh, well, we had 88,361 participants in our programs. Uh, we received $19,500 in grants, $32,000 in sponsorships, and $9,700 in kind donations. We currently have about 29,000 social media followers, and if it weren't for our volunteers, we wouldn't be able to do half of what we do. Uh, we had 729 volunteers last year for a total of 10,878 volunteer hours. The charts on this slide show growth trends in our programming divisions over the past five years. The events and cultural arts divisions reflect participants and event-attending numbers, while golf, recreation, and athletics reflect participant counts only. The events, cultural arts, and recreation divisions are trending upward since COVID, while athletics has only shown a slight increase due to the addition of rugby. One of the challenge, we're, challenges we're faced with in the department is the limited number of resources for expanding our programs in our athletics division. Moving on to athletics, uh, we hosted 326 out of 365 days of programmed indoor and outdoor sports. Approximately 232,000 spectators and participants attended our athletic programming events during 2021. Our athletics division started a new program, the Greer 76ers Rugby. Uh, we have high school girls, high school boys, and middle school teams that are currently in season. Uh, we hosted a regional Christmas sevens, uh, tournament, and teams from all over the southeast and the northeast came to Greer. Uh, that was back in December. And these are just some pictures that reflect some of the different programs that we offer in our athletics division. In our recreation division, we offered 37 programs to the community in 2021 with over 7,000 participants. Eight of those 37 were new and unique programs to our department. Our pickleball and archery programs continue to have unprecedented growth. And again, these pictures just reflect some of the different programs that we offer in our recreation division.
Liz Cunningham, why?
Oh, sorry.
Archery.
Why archery? We have a huge under, uh, population that loves archery, and it is growing. Um, why, I, people like it. I mean, it's just, uh, it's competitive. I think a lot of different ages can, can participate. Um, and it's something different, you know, it's just a different sport to offer.
It doesn't make noise like a gun.
That's true. It doesn't.
Mayor, I was talking to someone the other day, and she has three children. They live in the city, and we were just talking about things in general, and that's one of the programs that all three of her kids are in. They, they all love it, so.
Yeah, it's a huge fun. It's growing every day. So we're, we're fortunate to have it. It took us a long time to get it, but when we got it, it's just exploded.
There's some hearts in the city.
That's right. I'm gonna leave that one alone.
Please move on. We have many of dear. We have no awareness against honey.
Okay. In our cultural arts division, um, we had 471 art gallery visitors at the Edward Art Driggers City of Greer Center for the Arts in 2021. We had a total of approximately 8,600 participants and attendees in our programs and events. Staff hung 293 pieces of artwork, which required over 300 hours of staff time. And the arts division received uh, $14,895 in donations and sponsorships and in-kind donations. Uh, and these pictures just reflect some of the different programs, again, that we offer in our cultural arts division.
Let me, let us stop here for just one minute, because I do want to give a shout-out to cultural arts, because, uh, Rob is back there hiding. I know, I know it's been very difficult the last two or three years with, with COVID and, and everything that's been going on to, to keep the programming out there alive, but the, but the, the variety of things that we have been able to offer and the number of citizens that we have been able to touch through that program from, from youth all the way through to our senior programs out there, I, I think that validates every cent that we put into that facility, because that was exactly what we were looking for. That was, that was what we wanted from the beginning. And, um, you know, taking in some of the events that have taken place out there, it's, it's just, it, it, it's really satisfying to see that facility being used in the way that it is and, and drawing the kind of attendance that it does. And I look forward to more and more of the programming that I have seen lately. I was unfortunately unable to stay long for the, uh, the black artist recognition, but we had some fantastic artists there. This, I heard the speaker was, was good, and that's, I think that's the kind of thing that demonstrates how we can cut across this community with, with our offerings is through that type of programming. So just tip of the hat to, to, to the recreation department and the cultural arts department. I, I think we are on the right track there.
Thank you. Uh, in our events division, uh, we facilitated 629 events in 2021. With the return of festivals and special events from COVID, we saw some of our largest attendances to date. The Ambassador Program continued its third year of operation, and staff transported over 9,200 passengers in our EVs. We have expanded our partnerships with outside event organizers to provide quality special events, such as the Greer Farmers Market and the Upstate Renaissance Fair. And again, more pictures just to reflect some of the different programs that we offer through our events division. In Greer Golf, we experienced a very productive year in 2021. Our total number of rounds increased 20% due to the completion of the course renovation and also due to our partnership with Golf Now. This will continue with the addition of the Upstate Golf Card in 2022. We're working with the sales manager of a new housing development near the golf course to include a membership with the purchase of a new home. Uh, we're expanding our junior golf offerings through partnerships with Greer High School, Greer Middle College Charter High School, our recreation summer camps, and the First Tee and Grow Golf Now programs. Our work with a professional marketing and advertising firm has proven to be very beneficial. Our new website is attractive, it's user-friendly, and social media activity has been a huge increase. And again, these are just pictures, uh, that show different features at Greer Golf. Moving on to some of the projects we completed in 2021. After five years of planning and one year of construction, we completed the renovation of Kids Planet and reopened in April as the Benson Automotive Kids Planet. We created the Greer 76ers Rugby Program, and this is the first in the state of South Carolina by a municipality. Uh, we completed the renovations to the fairways and the bunkers at Greer Golf, making it the first golf course in South Carolina to feature Tohoma 31 Bermuda grass, and we added a new restroom facility at Turner Field. Staff have been very active in preparing for the historic and exponential growth our city is seeing. Some of the current and future projects that we're working on are collaborating with the Greer Fire Department to modify our master plan for our South Subaru Road Park, preparing for the development of a master plan for Country Club Road Park, working with consultants on master plans for the trails for the South Tiger River Greenway and Woods Creek, finalizing engineered construction plans for the conversion of Turner Park into a rugby and multi-com, multipurpose complex, finalizing design plans and completing construction plans with a contractor to renovate the Greer Golf Clubhouse and Pool Area, working with Greenville County officials regarding future use of East Riverside Park, and working towards rebranding of the department to Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. Some of the challenges that we're facing include programs that are at capacity. Our baseball, softball, soccer, wrestling, and basketball programs are at capacity with wait lists each season. In over 25 years, we've never, we have never had to waitlist for youth sports until last year, and in 2021, we had approximately 200 children that were on our waitlist, and these were from people that were registered before we even closed registration. Um, with the population growing, demand is going to continue to grow. Limited resources, again, facilities and staff, resources, limit programs that we can offer. Location of facilities, uh, in the city strategic plan, we are tasked with searching in hopes of acquiring land south of 85. There's a large population that we do not currently serve with a local park. Uh, increase in diversity of offerings, we're seeing an increase in requests and the growing need for a dog park, for trails, rugby, and public art. Uh, and then promoting tourism. We want to work with the Chamber, Greer Development Corporation, and other organizations to promote Greer as a destination place for festivals, for sports, and for events. You know, we're excited. We look at this as a challenge that presents opportunities, and we want to face these challenges and continue growing as a department to better serve our residents. We are very appreciative of the support and advocacy of our Recreation Association Board of Trustees, our ad hoc committee representatives, the Greer Cultural Arts Council, and the many volunteers that give countless hours of their time, um, to ensure that we offer quality recreation programs. Uh, a lot of our supervisors are here tonight, I think most of them actually are here. Thank you. And I am so grateful for the hard work that they do and their staff do every day. Uh, they are so committed to what they do. Um, this concludes my presentation. Uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity and for your continued support, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
And are we still providing mannequins to the museum?
No, not at this time. Um, and Robbie, correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't for, yeah, before COVID.
You mentioned the renovation of Kids Planet.
Yes.
The bullet point of why we needed to do that was safety. It's just too bad.
Yes, it was safety.
I wish I couldn't have stopped in the middle of Russian Creek, the, the, right after it opened. This was before the, the zip line-
Mm-hmm.
-went down. This kid may have broken it. But you're supposed to sit on the drive. This little kid, he was having the best time. He was standing up, jumping up and down on that thing to make it look faster, just jumping. I said, I need a video shot of him. But he was enjoying it.
Well, that's good. That's what it's all about. And we, I don't know if you've recently, you've seen this, but recently we just had the dragon carving that was done in the tree out there. Uh, it's on the other side of the five-to-12-year-old playground, like you're going down towards the hillside slides, but there's the huge tree trunk that we left after we cut a huge oak tree down, and they came and they carved a dragon, and it's in the top, and then it's got the castle he's sitting on, and he's got the stairwell that goes down. It's, it's pretty cool. So we're pretty excited.
Grass for, is that, we, we've, have we installed or the sod or the seed or whatever? Because we've got the irrigation in now, right?
We have the irrigation. We've not installed sod, and that's something that Travis and I will work on, um, if it's needed. I mean, we have, it's been seeded, so we are going to watch it and see what areas, we're, we're watching areas for traffic, because that's going to dictate where we put grass and where we don't, and where we might have to put alternative, um, you know, some type of other material in the ground.
Yeah, right, right now it's just kind of muddy.
Yeah, it's, um, I, I, again, Travis and I are working with the landscape architect, and they've got some plans for us, but I think we just, again, we're just waiting for warmer weather.
Now, the children that are waitlisted, is there any other alternatives for them? Like church leagues and things like that? Is that not-
We refer them, we do. We refer them to any other, there might be other groups in the area that, that we refer them to, but we do everything we can to take, take as many children as we can, whether or not we form other teams. But a, again, you only have so much space. And certainly with the ages of children, you can only, they can only practice or play at, you know, up to a certain point. So, but we do, we, we try to work with all the other groups in the area.
And that same thing, I know it's the chicken and the egg, but is it, we need more facilities or we need more staff, or, I mean, how, how do we address this situation, or is it both?
I think it's going to be both, because i-if you're going to bring in more facilities, you're going to offer more programs, you're going to have more staff, you're going to have to have staff to operate it, um, you know, and run those programs. But again, we, we have a master plan for Subaru, we, we want to do one for Country Club. You know, those kind of go hand in hand, because as we take fields away from Country Club and move them to Subaru, then we'll move baseball fields to Country Club as it was originally designed. Um, a-and again, that's just going to help us meet that need, um, for offering those programs. There may be opportunities at East Riverside, uh, that's something we're working with Greenville County. Um, you know, Turner is another facility that we're working towards, you know, having the engineer plans drawn now. Uh, we'll put that out to be at, uh, in the summer. And, um, so there's a lot of opportunity. We're working on, Red's been working on a land and water conservation grant that will go towards Turner. So we are looking at every resource possible to, to bring in, to, to make that happen.
Any chance of owning East Riverside?
That might be more in y'all's area than mine.
I mean, have, have you seen any inclination by the county to get out of there?
I don't know, but I'll answer that. I don't know that they necessarily want to get out of it, but I don't know that they're completely closed to the idea of that.
Listen, it said one time that there was so much expense to bring that park up to date, up to par, or something.
They've done a lot of work. They, they've done a lot of work out there.
Yeah, I have noticed there's been more activity out there, and the children's probably going back there in the back, yeah.
They are. And, um, I know that Travis has evaluated it, and that, that's something that we would have to take into consideration. Um, and of course, it would be presented to Mr. Mayorman and to, and to y'all if we were to request to proceed. Um, there's a lot of pluses to having it. We don't really have resources on the east side, so, um, we'd like to continue looking into that.
What do you envision being ideal from a facility park standpoint, south of 85?
I think it could be something that we would, uh, have in conjunction with the fire department, or I don't know if there'd be a need for police department, but I think it may be more of a passive-type park. I think we have to take into consideration what parks are in the area. You've got Tiger River over here, that's a huge complex. We're not there to compete. I mean, that's pretty much taken. Um, so what is not being offered in that area, and I think really passive, people really want to be able to go out and just do whatever they want to do. Um, we could always have, you know, multipurpose fields out there if we want to do soccer or, you know, any other type of sport. Um, so I, I think that's pretty open. You could do dog park. I, I just, I think we would have to evaluate everything that Greenville County's got down there and everything that Spartanburg County has in those areas. And then, of course, ask the residents, you know, what are they interested in? Um, but I definitely think there's a need. I, I, I don't know what land, you know, that's the problem. You know, there's just land that's going so quickly. Y'all know that better than me.
Well, we have people wanting to annex all the time, so we could just say, yeah, set us aside 10 acres for a park, and we'll bring you in.
I would love that. That would be great. That is a great idea.
Facility-wise, is it like an even mix of basketball, gym, soccer field, baseball? I mean, like, what's the priority?
I think, well, again, you can look at our master plan that we did back in 2009. I mean, trails, of course, that's number one, and that's something that we're moving forward with. I think the second on that list was an activity center, something that is more than what we have here, where we're just limited. We have got that facility programmed, I think, seven days a week, and it is full all the time. And that's great, that's what we're supposed to do. But again, when it comes to like basketball and different programs that we're going to have inside, you can only offer so much based on your space. So I would, I think an activity center would be very useful here.
Trying to bring back roller skating.
We could do that. We could do that. If there's a need, you know, we're open to it.
And archery.
And archery.
Roller skating and archery just, same time. Yes.
We could have a news story.
That's right.
We could be best in the world.
That we could be.
Red Department was known for roller skating and birthday parties.
That's right. That's right.
Other legitimate discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
I was going to say, just growing up south of 85, we need some, something.
Public services. Coming up, sir. You've been with us all meeting. I didn't realize you were going to be last, but we saved the best for last. How about that?
The department name and notoriety of public services is still very new to me, so sometimes I'm delayed to jump when that is called. But thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to share the year-end review for the Public Services Department. As Steve spoke on earlier, the grounds division, which was my priority within the Recreation Department along with Public Services, was combined in October of 2021. That combination yielded the Public Services Department now with 44 positions, both full-time and part-time. As it stands today, we have a department head, two superintendents, a ground superintendent, and what is a public service superintendent, and we have two grounds maintenance supervisors. We kind of subcategorize those into athletics and grounds or athletics and recreations, and one supervisor that's in charge of City Park in downtown. So to kind of show our organizational chart as the way we're broken out into divisions these days, we have fleet maintenance, grounds maintenance, solid waste, and street maintenance. So going forward with our year-end review, I will start with fleet maintenance first. We have two full-time mechanic positions in fleet maintenance. Currently, we're at 179 vehicles throughout the city. That also covers small engine stuff, whether it be tractors, leaf machines, lawnmowers, blowers, things that we can handle in-house. We try not to take those items, say, to a Carolina loaner tractor or landscaper supply unless it's something we absolutely cannot work on. The chart there on the page shows our numbers compared to last year, whether it was road calls, or tires, or major minor repairs, brakes and rotors, things of that nature. I think that while we do have a full-time mechanic position that has been vacant since about October, I think with that position there, we would have seen those numbers trend a little bit higher, just as obviously we're able to get more work done with two mechanics there than one. So those numbers are higher, they're probably not necessarily slowing down, but not the fullest steam that they were. I'm currently interviewing applicants for that position this week, so hopefully we can get somebody in here rather quickly. From fleet maintenance, we'll move over to grounds maintenance. Again, we have a ground superintendent currently with two ground supervisors. The colors there on the flow chart will come into play in a little bit to kind of keep things organized. But both supervisors report to that superintendent, and they have hosts of full and part-time employees, both that work directly under them. As it stands today, in the grounds maintenance division, we have eight athletic facilities, Center for the Arts, we have City Park in downtown, Kids Planet, six neighborhood parks, three recreational facilities, one memorial park and Veterans Park, and we still maintain the shooting range. Collectively, that makes approximately 150 acres, and at our current staff levels, that equates to about 10.71 acres per staff member, a full-time staff member that that division is responsible for. This slide is where we track games and practices, preparations across different athletic facilities. I would like to have comparative numbers to last year with COVID being in place and not a spring season, those numbers would have been skewed. I will also admit that I would like to bring more trackable items of this nature to this year-end review from this year moving forward. There's a lot of things that happen in that grounds maintenance division that are difficult to put a time on or to track and show exactly what it is that that division is taking care of on a yearly basis. Some ideas that I have in my head are how much time we're spending in neighborhood parks, how much time we're spending on athletic fields, at recreational facilities. So I hope that next year, as we move through this year-end review and I get to the grounds maintenance division, there's some more chartable data that I can present to you guys moving forward. With that said, right here, this chart, if you ran all the numbers together, we ended up at approximately 780 games and just over 1,000 practices across these 10 sites that the grounds maintenance division was responsible for preparing for, whether that be baseball, football, soccer, flag football, football, rugby, different sports of that nature. The grounds maintenance division, as it was before, those were the employees that were in conjunction with the events division and the Parks and Recreation Department, working events that we held in the city. Last year in 2021, we saw a total of 927.16 labor hours across those events that were hosted within the city. And you can see where Freedom Blast, Arts and Eats, the tree lighting and the Christmas Parade are our largest working events. And the last three events took place under the restructuring of the Public Services Department. So that allowed us to input those employees that maybe had never worked that event, or call on employees that hadn't been called on in past time to do that event. It has allowed us to restructure how we staff and work events moving forward. I think while we still will work these events, it allows individual employees to maybe work four to six events a year instead of eight to 10. We can kind of break that up into two different groups and rotate those groups working events throughout the year.
You might not have the data, but go back just one second.
Sure.
Or, you know, yeah. We may not have the data to answer this question, but in terms of Arts and Eats, which was a new event essentially, I mean, I know we've done something similar in the past with the Chamber. How does that amount of employees and labor time compare to what we've done in the past? Because that one obviously stands out from anything else in there in terms of time and employees. So how does that stack up against how we've done in the past, or do you have any idea?
For us, for Arts and Eats and in the past, that was our largest labor hour and employee event because it was a Friday evening and it's a pretty much all-day Saturday event. The hours of the event have seemed to stay the same, so for us, I could pretty much go back to last, you know, 2020 and probably give you the same, almost 380 hours and the same number of employees, give or take. So for us, it's the same, it's just we were able to entertain different employees with the merger, and some folks that have always worked it didn't have to work it, or maybe they worked Saturday instead of Friday, and different things of that nature. Moving on to the next one is our solid waste division. Our solid waste division is operated by Meridian Waste, as everybody is familiar with, and they have a contract that is expiring in June of 2022, and we are in the works of rewriting that contract and getting something to them, obviously before that contract ends. And data collected from them, this is our solid waste tonnage as a five-year lookback. We are still trending close, although we will be more than, or we were more than what 2020 was. And you put those two years together, obviously it makes more than anything for the first, second, and third year before that. So I think we have, you know, upward influx, as you'll see as we go through the solid waste division, of those folks moving to the area, or people still being at home, or working from home, or that consumer purchasing is up. So there's more waste being generated, and that will be reflected also as we move forward. Their recycling numbers are also up over what they've been for the last few years. The yellow line there is the recycle center, and the blue line there is curbside recycling in the recycle bins. And again, this is also a five-year lookback on that.
Best tonnage?
Yes, that is correct. So, new carts, we've broken this down into new homes and recycle bins, and then yard waste carts. 2021, obviously being the dark blue there, all three categories are higher than they were in years past. So again, as we move through it, we see that we have an upward, obviously we have an upward influx of those folks moving to the area. And this is repaired or replaced carts, and replaced carts, repaired carts being topped there. Unfortunately, this is a four-year lookback. I couldn't find a whole lot of data to give an accurate picture of year one of five, but as we move forward into next year, I think I'll start seeing everything showing to you guys as a five-year lookback. The interesting one for me, I thought, was e-waste collected at the recycle center. This is also reported in tons, more than we had in 2020. I don't know if we have older items that are aging out, people that are interested in buying different things, or during their time at home during COVID, that they realized that the resolution on their TV wasn't that great, or they wore the iPad out, or whatever it may be. But it's one of the, it's not the largest year we've ever had, but it's one of them. And then last but not least is our street maintenance division. This staff reports to the public service superintendent, who then in turn reports to the department head. Steve, I think for a few years, maybe a year or two before this merger and the recent changes, had been working on a crew-based model, and I can show that better on the next slide, where you see ideally we have an asphalt crew, a concrete crew, mowing crew, and what we call a quick strike crew. You know, our asphalt and concrete crews, we would like to have those dedicated crews for those jobs within the city. It's something that, it's still in the works. We do more of it than we've probably done in the last few years, and we would like to continue to strive to moving that crew where their day-in and day-out operation is either an asphalt job or a concrete job somewhere within the city. The mowing crew, you're talking either tractor mowing, or riding lawnmowers, weed eating, things of that nature. And then the quick strike crew, you got work orders that may come in that could be immediate take-care-ifs right here and there, roll cart replacements, their pickups, deliveries, repairs, construction e-waste material pickup and haul off from over at Meridian, and then miscellaneous maintenance items that wouldn't be taken care of otherwise by the other three. The street maintenance division, they took care of 11500 miles of right-of-way mowing, 190 potholes, 880 linear foot of sidewalks, and 93 street signs that were repaired or replaced. The graph or the chart there on the right shows a four-year lookback at potholes repaired. It's probably the lowest that we've been, but I anticipate those numbers to go up as we get more concentrated into an asphalt crew and a group that is not running and putting out a few fires, but they have one concentrated area to kind of take care of. We also jetted and camera 2,368 linear foot storm drain. Our sweeper truck ran 4,885 curb miles. We took care of 229 miles or 3,090 gallons of roadside spraying, and then there was 117 loads of leaves collected. We're working on collecting, getting that number of leafs collection together for this year. We just finished up within the last week. We've got some miscellaneous odd ends that we're still picking up, but I'm not sure if we're trending more or less. I think that maybe that chart in the four-year lookback has kind of gone down because I would think that people may have started contracting that service out to a landscape company, or maybe taking care of some of it theirself. So I'll be interested to see if we're higher or lower than that 117 number from last year.
We also lost a lot of trees during that bad storm we had.
That is true as well, so, yeah.
We were reduced several.
Yeah. So some of these highlighted projects here, obviously, are before me taking over the Public Service Department, but there was South Avenue Sidewalk Replacement, there was 240 linear foot there in March, Moore Street, 160 linear foot also in March, Maple Creek Circle got 18-inch HDPE storm drain pipe replaced in June, Sunny Side Community Revitalization Project took right about a month and a half or two months of street sign replacement and improvements, trash pickup, roadside limb up trimming, pothole repair, et cetera. Mountain View Cemetery asphalt work, that was a 30-ton in-house asphalt job in June and July of '21. Down here, the downtown Hotel Sotera, site grading in preparation, and then the initial Lemon Creek speed humps that were installed in December of 2021. So another interesting thing that I wanted to put in this presentation was the winter weather event that we worked back in January. It was January for us, January 15th, Saturday to Tuesday, January 18th for staff. That equated to 18 employees working over 1,100 labor hours for that event for us. And it was the largest snowstorm I had seen since seven and a half years I've been here, and probably the largest I've seen in years before that. But this kind of illustrates how much product and how far we traveled and the lengths we went to make sure that we were doing the best job for the city of Greer when it came to a snowstorm event. You get down near the bottom where the totals may get lower in the magnesium chloride, or whether it was granular or liquid, that really talks to sidewalks. And down on Trade Street, the sidewalks there on the pavers, we have to use not a special product, just a different product to uphold the warranty from the paving company, or the paver manufacturer. So for 2022 and beyond, I think we're going to see continued need for crew-based formatting. I have a thought process and a dream in my head that we need to work on crew-based idea for the athletic and neighborhood parks. That group of individuals is a group that we kind of have people running around taking care of multiple items instead of streamlining certain folks in certain directions on a daily and monthly basis. There's going to be a development of a, I don't know if we'll call it a stormwater crew, that will work through Steve and Robert, but that will be the folks that are jetting lines and collecting data for stormwater, things of that nature. Steve had spoke about the work order system, and there's a lot to really unload for that as it looks at the Public Services Department, but I think the first thing I pick out is a work order system to not only direct staff and send them in a particular direction, but also be able to look back at the history of different areas, or how long it's taken us to complete projects, or to do daily tasks, and how many of those items we're able to do over a year in certain categories. I think we're going to find some challenges with inflation, that's no surprise to anybody in lead times. I think that inflation obviously is going to be a direct reflection in the budget, and then being able to get, whether it be product, or equipment, or projects, material in, we'll have to be a little bit more patient than we've been in the past as those things continue to change. Continued influx of residents, that really impacts us from every department, as that means more athletics, or more recreation, or more streets and sidewalks, or more roads to kind of take in and put that under our belt. So I think that's something we're going to see more of moving forward. And then that continued review of our solid waste division and the contract with Meridian as we move forward. The next slide is The next slide is is a very, it's very jumbled, and I apologize that there are small writing on it. Ideally, when we speak to a crew-based format, hopefully, the colors can help direct the eye as to kind of the idea and the thought process that we have for the next budget year moving forward. And that's really breaking up, adding that stormwater crew under the Public Service Superintendent, and then breaking down that athletics and recreation or athletics and ground side to to help feed direction and and put staff in in the right place. So we can move from trying to figure out when we're gonna get something handled to that becoming the normal of, yes, we can, we can make sure that's taken care of out of the ordinary stuff. So and then again, just summarizing, it's it's crew-based for us, stormwater crew, our work order system, continued focus towards proactive maintenance work. That was an initiative that Steve put into place when he was in public service that I would like to continue forward. And then I would also like to see cross-training of the street maintenance division and the grounds division. So we have a building full of employees that if there are folks out on a given day or we've got a lot going on or a nine-one-one comes up that we're we don't have to worry, well, we can only send three people that direction. We can start sending multiples in areas that maybe it's stuff they've never done before or never been exposed to. So with that, I will be happy to to answer any questions at this time.
Counsel?
I got two quick questions.
Sure.
And this may not be on the vehicle maintenance, fleet management side. How do we currently handle, you know, that process of managing for, you know, routine maintenance and tracking usages and utilization? Is that currently on the radar, or is that what Steve is trying to get to?
Yeah, I think the end goal is what Steve is trying to get to. The way we have it now is pen and paper, kind of a work order slip that stays with the mechanic shop and then goes to whichever department it runs through. My office gets my signature on it, and then it goes for tracking anywhere after that.
Do we do like monthly mileage sheets or anything, like in a book and and the vehicles or anything like that currently?
Not currently, I'm sure.
And then the second question, I tend to get a lot of calls about the municipal waste or, you know, solid waste. Is there any kind of checks and balances that we have in that contract to to ensure that things are being done properly, you know?
So I I think I'm a little green to the whole solid waste thing, but I have been included in heavy conversation of rewording that contract and making sure that those checks and balances that have not been there in the past are there moving forward, where there is a, there is clear verbiage of who is responsible for what, when is when is it supposed to be taken care of, who's gonna pick it up, things of that nature. I will say that since Meridian has taken over, it's it's gotten way better. But there are still improvements to be made. And my feeling is that with the implementation of the next version of that contract, we will see those changes make a big impact.
Last comment. To my opinion, the best way to be proactive, at least from the roadway side, is if we can get to the point where we ride the road during the daytime and nighttime as well, you can, you know, see a lot of those things. And that's the easiest way to become proactive.
Yes, sir.
Just hit somebody that can ride it, you know?
Yes, sir.
Jumping off as far as the the roads and the sidewalks and all of that stuff, will you be looking at, we had a picture of a tractor cutting a right-of-way. I remember when we got it, so it's that thing has to have a lot of hours on it. When it ages out, are you gonna look to do more mechanization with a unit? And when I say a unit, I don't have a a name for it, but a a unit that's multifunctional, one that could spray vacuum leaves. It might be a push-no, I I don't know. That's a, is that something that you you're thinking about? Or is it, because street paving and sidewalks, that's, you know, that, we all see that, and it's a a good patch, a good repair. You know, it it just goes a long ways to saving our taxpayer dollars.
Yep, my idea to, as as we are phasing out equipment, new technologies becoming available, if we can get a unit that handles multiple jobs in one, that would be ideal. For me, that that means I have one operator operating machine and can do two or three jobs, how many ever that is. And they can almost do one one job, say, on a road, and almost circle back and do the next job that 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 machine's capable of. So while I don't know where that roadside mower mechanically, I'm gonna knock on wood because it'll fall apart soon as we start it up after I say this. But mechanically, right now, it's sound, it's well taken care of, the operators of the past and that we have currently make sure that it it's greased properly and hydraulic fluid and all that good stuff. So but as as we move forward in in that equipment, we're seeing, you know, in the service life on it, I think it would it would benefit us to see if those options are available and and venture down that path of multiple, multiple jobs onboard one piece of equipment.
Mr. Mayorman, back to events. Obviously, some of those events that were listed are are solely ours. Some of those are events that we collaborate with somebody else, and some of them are entirely somebody else's events. How do we reconcile those hours from a financial standpoint?
They're just built into the, they're built into the year. They're built into salaries throughout the year. It's just those special events. Now, there's, it's it's eaten up sometimes in overtime, but generally speaking, it's it's part of the year's events. There are some of those events that we we are compensated for, and there is a payment made, but it certainly doesn't cover our costs.
Now, that makes me ask a question. So like for snow and ice, is there like, and we may not be at that point, but is there a special event-type coding that people can charge to? We don't have that capability.
In those cases, I mean, from a financial standpoint, I imagine David and his wizardry moves money around to where it's 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 coded to something along those lines. In this particular case with a winter, a winter event, it's not coded anyway. It's just, we just absorb it. So and they're so few and far between, it'd be like, you know, buying extra plows or, you know, salt bins or things of that nature that, I don't know, it'd be worth the time or the effort.
Well, I was just saying, just going back to the mayor's, if we have a special event where we're putting hours to, we can just create a special event, track those hours. See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, whether it's snow and ice or whether it's arts and eats.
One thing, going back to to ice or snow events, we need to make sure that we're educated in the the formula where the chemicals we put down on the roads are going to work. Because there's a fine line that where it it works really good and a fine line where it creates more.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So do we have enough equipment for a city of our size as far as snow removal?
Yes and no. We we do, assuming, so I have in my budget submission for next year a set of snowplow brackets. We have a spare plow sitting in in the operations center that with the purchase of a set of brackets for one of our larger dump trucks. And then I think moving forward, maybe the next year after that, start to start to outfit certain and particular pickup trucks with snow plows. If we don't have the yearly snowstorm that we had in January, we're in grade J. That was that was borderline pushing the limits of what we had available and our capabilities from staff standpoint, from equipment standpoint. But I I don't want to panic purchase because we probably haven't seen that in ten years. So we 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 would end up buying equipment that would be sitting around and may not get used until it's ready to be replaced.
And of course, any equipment we get, and this was, this is for anybody, any equipment we get, the right training to operate it from the seller. I mean, I know everybody says they might run a lawnmower. Yeah, well, maybe so. But but when it comes to things, if we don't use a lot, for instance, stolen equipment, I think that would probably help be helpful, just when you talk about having the folks trained.
Yeah, that's a, so those folks that were in the Public Services Department before October that were snowplow operators or salt spreader operators, their understanding and training came from those manufacturers. And then this year was was probably the first time we've plugged a new plow operator or new salt spreader staff member in the truck and gave them some feet to the fire, real-time training, on-the-job training, which was great. It was folks that's, they've never been exposed to that, nor they were just not in a position to. So things of that nature that I would like more folks in the department to know about. So we have a larger capability to kind of move around and take care of things as we need it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you to all of you that have participated tonight. I think this has been extremely beneficial and and helpful. We thank you for the time that y'all have put into the presentations. They were all all good and informative, and we thank you for the time that you've put into that. That helps us as we go into our workshop session here towards the end of the week. And with that, we'll call the workshop to a conclusion. Thank you.